Late enough at work. So far, yeah. Uh, I've been busy with this project with the future language mapping. They've got me. Enjoy to work. So enjoy it.
Yeah, I think Kevin was really ragged trying to.
Yeah, I mean, Kevin. Really made known Kevin a long time. I went to school with his daughter. Elementary school, high school, so I've known him since second grade. So he was like, hey. The grad school, so can you?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, that's that's sure, that's.
Do we have?
You know, um.
Brad, do this.
This is pretty much just under our housing. Section in our town plan.
So this.
My turn to the page, I don't want to start here.
Eventually, uh, it. Our housing and future language chapters will be updated for our regional plan. So the next time you go about updating your town plan. You just have to make sure that. The parts in it that will be reviewed by Two Rivers will be. Approved. It's basically, you don't have to change anything now. This is the regional future language map as part of our. Regional plan, but then the next thing you have a town plan, it's gonna be basically balanced and compared with this one to make sure it's in compliance.
Okay.
So nothing has to change now or be voted on now. This is mostly just a. Um, it's like a two-year process for our side of things. Exactly.
Yeah, cuz I think our hazard mitigations next.
Yes.
If you want, you don't have a grant for anymore to help us, right?
We don't have a specific grant. We have some funds. For the rest of this year that we can squeak in for some towns.
Next year.
But I don't know about next year.
Kevin said next year is zip all.
Yeah, there's nothing that. We have confirmed for next to anyway. So unfortunately. Alright, well, I'll start then. To share the screen, make sure that's going. I gotta make sure I'm back on. For myself. Okay, I guess I'll just look free off the screen and. So everyone's ready, um. My name is Kyle Hanson. I'm a planner at Two Rivers out of Wichi Regional Permission. Uh, and I've been tasked. Uh. He's got a backup settings. I've been tasked with. Meeting with all. Thirty towns in our region to go over this presentation. Pretty cool. I'll just keep going, um. Yeah, so what we're doing, it would have been me and Kyle Katz, so our, uh. Our catchphrase is the two cows and two rivers, but tonight it's just the one calf and two rivers. So. We're going over the changes to Act one eighty-one. Um. And Act two fifty, so Act one eighty-one was passed last year. Actually, the legislature, uh. That's gonna talk about your housing targets, the housing chapter of our regional plan. It also has some changes to Act two fifty. So I'll be going over a little bit of that tonight, telling you. What that means, what to expect. And then the feature land use map or regional feature land use map. Um, I have a proposed draft. For the entire region, I've. We've printed out just Tunbridge and we compare it to what it looks like currently in our current regional plan. So we've updated most of the chapters of our regional plan this year. Except for housing and future land use. So by twenty twenty-seven, we should have our housing and future land use chapters. Um, updated her. The right, the regulations in Act one one. So I will. I can actually get back to. Think I might have messed it up. I might have shared the wrong state. Alright. So here's a timeline of what we're looking at right now. We're in the. First phase of the. Update to our future land use chapter. We're meeting with all thirty towns, showing the maps, having these discussions. Uh, that's gonna run until December. So. About halfway through and it's June, so we've got. Like there's six months to meet with another. Sixteen or so towns. There is some room for second meetings for towns that are. That request it, especially if there's big changes needed to the proposed maps, if there's something big that comes up for larger towns that. Really have to think about the housing targets, you might need a second meeting. The Two Rivers Board will begin review. Uh, in January. And we want our maps ready for hearing by June of next year. So we've got a full year for these maps to be basically. Wrapped up, ready to go, and then we'll have a couple of public hearings starting in September. And everything should be adopted, um, by December twenty twenty-six for us. And that gives the state another year to review. Maps and then now the land use review board is. Let's replacing the, uh, Act two fifty. Land use board. Basically the same thing with some different, uh. Different rules, but they have to have some time to review it before it goes into effect by twenty twenty-seven. So just a brief intro to what we're doing here. This is a part of the regional plan update. So we're looking at this from a regional level, so. Planning isn't always local up or state down. Uh, and good regional planning. Extends beyond town boundaries. So when we're looking at these maps, we're thinking about how do these areas. Cross town lines and how are we best mapping them? To be effective and. Make sense on the ground as well as when we look at our policies on our chapter. So that watersheds, roads, ridge lines, forest blocks, connector blocks. Um. Wetlands, all these things across town lines, might be really small sliver. In one town, that makes no sense. Um, it'd just die on me. But. If it's on a regional level, it'll make more sense. If it's just the town level. It might not. So that's the difference between like the local level plan. Is. Is that? Did I pull on something? Seems to be on here.
Okay, so I think.
Okay. Maybe if they got. This whole thing is. Technical difficulties.
Words, will you be unsure?
It might not be. Now I'm sharing this screen. That's not the right one. Sorry about that. Yeah, it's trying to pop up, but it's. Confused. It won't go full screen. Yeah, I do that and it just goes to the.
I stop in the share and starting it again and see if you can get the right screen.
Yeah, it's kinda goes into nothing. Doesn't look like a. Weird. But open up here. That's showing what's showing there, which is not exactly what I'm talking about. As long as I can get something to work. Great. Um, well, I guess it's not gonna cooperate, but I can make do with this. Just kind of. I remember I've done this so many times, I can probably give it without the presentation, but, uh. I'll just show it here, so. There's a couple of state planning goals in Act one eighty-one that we're. Wanting to adhere to with these plans. Uh, we wanna maintain historic settlement patterns of these compact villages that are surrounded by rural countryside. So you gotta make sure that we don't have too much sprawl, especially when we're talking about our housing targets. We wanna make sure that those villages. Um. Contain the majority of new housing. We also wanna protect the long-term viability of ag lands, uh, especially in those open rural areas that are currently being. Used for farming or land that could in the future be used for farming. So you wanna maintain lower density in the rural areas and increase density in the village areas. That's pretty much the state goal when it comes to. Housing and land use. So these state, uh, required changes will result in. Expanded village areas. Little bit, if infill is not possible, like a, if it's a one open lot that you can't. But, you know, a house in, we might have to spread it a little bit just to get that room for the new housing. Uh, due to the housing targets, which I'll go into a little bit. And also, that'll allow for more commercial opportunity in our regional plan. Having the larger village areas means that. If Act two fifty gets triggered. Uh, it's less likely to in that village area because in our regional plan, we allow for a larger commercial. Structures within those village areas. Not that a lot of towns are gonna. Want that, but. For towns that don't have zoning. The Act two fifty review matters quite a bit for the towns that do. We're also looking at, um, when we're expanding these village areas, there's currently the state designation. Process for villages, so you've got two in Tunbridge, you've got North Tunbridge and Tunbridge Village. When you talk about expanding these village areas. Everything that we map as a village. The designation will expand to cover. So you also get the same benefits there at a larger area than you currently have. Uh, another change is when we're looking at our rural conservation area, currently in our regional plan, they're called our forest-based resource conservation. In Act one eighty-one. The state changed the names for all these areas so that statewide, the names are consistent, the colors and the maps are consistent. The methodology is consistent. That way the state wanted. The RPCs to make these regional maps that are all consistent across. The entire state so that someone looking at it would say, oh, this is why this is this, this is that. Some RPCs, regional planning commissions don't have. The most detailed future land use maps. Two Rivers, we've always tried to have. Informative and accurate and useful maps, so we're just continuing that process. When we're talking about rural areas, we have the, uh. Currently, there's two rural areas, so when it says we have three moving forward. Currently, we have rural and that forest-based resource area. The forest-based resource area will be renamed rural conservation and be shrunken a little bit. And then in between the rural and the concept rural conservation, we have rural forestry and agriculture, which is. Basically, you're in between your working lands. Um, a lot of your larger current use parcels that. Or parcels that are large enough to be current use that are in forest block. They meet a bunch of criteria, uh. So we're looking at that protecting the viability of future and current ag. With that middle in-between area that didn't exist before. So that's that new third rural area. And I'll show you. A little example of that in a little bit.
Can you say the name of that one again?
So it's called rural forestry and, or rural ag and forestry, sorry, I get them. It's the RAF, although it's not the British coming, it's a rural ag and forestry. So here's a little diagram of a lot of these state. Named areas. On the left, we have our settlement areas, on the right are our rural areas. We have downtown centers are the most dense. That's in our region, we only have two. But elsewhere in the state, it's a lot of your cities and your larger towns. Every single town, uh, will have at least one village center, so all the state designated village. Centers will become a village center on our map. And there might be some new ones. Some towns didn't have a designation and are gonna get one. Some towns wanted a second village center designation. So this process will help them with that. Large towns that have water, wastewater, zoning and subdivision have the village area which replaces the neighborhood program, so. Most towns don't have that in our area, but some do. Hamlets are. Areas that could be planned at a town level as a village. But for a state level, don't quite meet the criteria for a state designation. So either they're too small, there's no. Commercial, there's not a lot of density, but there's, there might be a church, there might be a post office and a couple houses or a fire station. But it's not large enough to really be. A state designated village, but still marked as a hamlet because the town sees it as a significant village for local planning. On the rural side of things, we've got rural general, which is that rural residential. There's, there's some working land, there's some farm, there's some forestry. But overall, it's mostly residential. When we're looking at these rural areas. In order to not have a checkerboard effect. The, you know, follow roads, you follow rivers, you follow ridge lines, think about how do these areas kind of connect? So if there's a bunch of really small residential lots surrounding a farm. Um. That might all be rural general, or if there's a couple small. Residential only lots that are surrounded by a lot of farm. It'll all be rural ag and forestry. On our end, the policies are very similar between the two. So it doesn't affect. Anything, it just makes the map make more sense as these areas rather than. Resembling zoning, cuz we. Don't want the map to resemble a zoning map. This is a, you know, future land use area. We do follow parcel lines where possible, just to make the maps make sense on the ground, especially. When it comes to new housing development. But beyond that. These rural areas are mostly a parcel size plus. Other indicators. Our rural conservation is really just our. You know, higher elevations, large wetlands, five acres plus, state land, federal land. A large blocks of conserve land, highest priority forest block. Um, that's just your least dense residential area, but, um. Single-family homes are still fine to go in any of these farms, can go in any of these. Um, none of that gets affected by. These areas, this is a. You know, if Act two fifty gets triggered, then we're looking at these policies for the design review. So here's kind of, if the slideshow was working, this would be a little fun little graphic, but. Beforehand, in our current map. We have this white area, these green areas and the village areas. But this is the blue that we're talking about in between. We took a little bit from the rural conservation, took a little bit from the rural general. So again, those larger parcels, a lot of your farms, your current use, uh, some conserve land. Little bit of everything. And as I was talking about the considerations and developing these areas, parcel size, existing forest block. Highest priority forest block, highest priority connectivity block. Conserved and current use parcels. Land cover data, we're looking at. Satellite imagery to figure out where the farms are. Um, if the data is inaccurate. And then your five acre and up wetland, these are all considerations. All of these can exist in any of the rural areas. But. If there's multiple of them altogether. Or a bunch of farms altogether, or a bunch of. Large parcels on a highest priority forest block. The area overall will be. Checked into. Rural general, ag and forestry or conservation, depending on how many are selected. And which ones are selected. That brings us to our, how we develop the village areas. So we read Chelsea as an example because Chelsea went first. Uh, and they said we could use them as, as our example. We looked at, uh, floodplain. We looked at steep slopes, so above that thirty-five percent. Slope. And we looked at where there's existing infrastructure for water, wastewater. The towns that have water and wastewater can have a much higher density or plan for a higher density of that five units per acre. So when we're looking at those housing targets and where they're gonna go. Um, it's easier to. Find spots to plan for, not to say it's gonna happen, but it could happen theoretically. At a denser level, when you have these steep slopes and your river. To both, uh, taken into consideration. So that all being said. An example is Chelsea's village, so in our regional plan as it sits now. This pinky kind of red area is their, their village. Um, that little golden nugget is the state designation. And then we expanded the village out to fill the valley. Uh, which would accommodate the housing target. Uh, and all of that is now the same as that state designate, uh, state designation. So it all kind of gets bigger. But doesn't sprawl it too much more than it would have if it was to continue down the balance. Cuz all we're doing is planning for. What could go here? Could, could this in theory happen? Not that it's going. To happen, but. Um. In a future event where new roads get built, where parcels get subdivided, where there's private roads, where there's. More duplexes or multifamily homes. It could all fit in that area and not negatively impact the rural character or farmland. That being said, for housing targets, um, every town in our region has a housing target. Tunbridge, your housing target is sixty units, which is one point six percent of the regional total. And this is sixty units by twenty thirty. It's ambitious. We know it's ambitious, every town. Um. Has a similarly ambitious number. The way that we got to this number. The state gave us a, a regional target, which is thirty-six hundred units. This is. You know, a, a apartment, a duplex. Duplex would be two, a single family home would be one. Though it's not sixty buildings necessarily, but sixty livable units that could be rented or purchased. Could be ADUs, um. So we took that thirty-six hundred. Unit number, and then we proportionally divided that among all the towns. So for Hartford, for example, they have about. Twenty or so percent of our regional pop, population. Um, Tunbridge, you're around. Probably one point seven, one point eight. But we had a multiplier, which is why we got to the one point six. Towns that have water and wastewater and a highway. On ramp or off ramp, or, yeah, both. Would gain fifteen percent. So for Hartford, for Bradford, Randolph. All those towns that have the capacity for more housing. Got a higher number than that proportional split. Towns that had neither. Lost thirty percent. It would have been an even split, but Hartford skewed the numbers so wildly that in order to keep that thirty-six hundred. The increase had to be fifteen and the decrease is thirty. We felt like that was more fair for the smaller towns that didn't have the capacity. Uh, for a lot more density. So we still landed on that sixty unit number for Tunbridge. But again, the housing target is a planning goal. All we have to do is plan for the space to put. Fifty-five percent of that number in a village center. The rest can get. Planned for elsewhere in town. The number won't be reached by twenty thirty. But if any new housing gets built, it's a success by the state. There's no penalty for not building housing, there's no penalty for. Not reaching the number. It's a planning goal. So definitely don't worry about. Making sure that you have to hit that because it's not a requirement, it's a. It's, it's a goal, um. Just to get more housing for, to, to catch up at the rate at which we need to build housing for. Our current levels of. Housing shortage that we have right in the state.
So that's.
Yeah, like sixty units would be like a bedroom, a kitchen, a bathroom, basically. So someone could live there independently of. Another part of the house. So like a duplex or a multifamily or a. Apartment or a, or an ADU or a single family home, any of those would count. Uh. And then, of course, you can go from there in your town plan and say, we could plan for this or this or this.
Doing with all of this. You're anticipating an increase in population?
This is to keep up with the population that we currently have. So the, in the sake of the study, this is, they determined how many units are required statewide. To maintain the population we have not to the spin. The hope is that if more housing units get built. It could lower the, the cost of housing. I don't know if that's actually gonna happen, but that's kind of the goal is to make housing more attainable as well as available for the people who. Already live here. Uh. But of course, there's no guarantee, it's just an open a plan. Um. That's the last slide before I show maps. So if there's any questions. That haven't already been answered, I will try to get that working.
Is there an incentive for them to be actual living units instead of Airbnb's or short term?
That's a really good question. Um, currently, there's no state incentive for that. A lot of that would come down to local planning, so. If it had zoning, they could. Have a lot more say over what gets built. Towns that don't have zoning, it's, there's no state-led initiative as of now. So. That is unfortunate. See if I can open this map. I also have paper maps as well, we can. Maybe a little less finicky than the screen.
You guys are factoring in, like, people who have jobs or. People who have jobs and looking for housing in this area.
Yes, so.
Thirty people wanna move into the village. You have job.
Yeah, I mean. That's also why with the multiplier, we chose the towns that have. Byway access for some additional, because it's closer to. commuter routes, like if you're working Randolph from uphillier way of junction, it's easier to just go on the highway, the towns that are. Further away from that, that's a longer commute, people will be less like we don't. After the commute. But, I mean, we wanna incentivize people to move to every town and to have jobs in every town, so. We don't wanna have towns have no housing target. Because in future potential for for the job opportunities. We don't want any town to feel like it shouldn't. I don't know if that answers your question, I think, cause like currently, like for me, for example, I. I'm struggling to find. Housing myself, I'm still living at home. I'd like to be able to afford. You know, to move out, but there's just not enough. Availability for the prices to be low enough to. For dinner. I just graduated.
So is there anticipation, if all these numbers were met, then? The price wouldn't come down enough, so would be affordable?
That's the hope, now.
That's kind of a dream, that's good.
Yes, so that's kind of the.
Reality.
Supply and demand economics approach, trying to make housing more affordable. Which is better than no approach, but we don't know if that's actually gonna work, because people say, oh, more housing will move. From the city. Um, so we don't know if that's actually gonna work, but that's the plan. So. Uh. But I will say with the map, we. How cats. Looked the maps and he had the how he working with the housing chapter, he couldn't be here tonight because he's. On vacation this week. But, um. You looked at parcel sizes. Slope, floodplain. They map the villages to easily accommodate the housing target. At one unit per acre. So. That being said, we'll look at the maps, the top map. Is how Tunbridge looks like currently in our regional. So, you know, regional feature land use map. As it sits currently, this is the one that was approved. Five years ago. We can look. Transparent areas are rural general. Uh, your green is your forest base resource conservation. North Tunbridge was a hamlet, but that'll be upgraded because the golden areas are your state designations. And then the Tunbridge Village in our regional plan. That little. Polygon there, but there's a lot of the space that is just rural. Rural general.
So this is, this space here is what you're talking about for. For building. Planning for a planning for.
So, well, these are the areas as it sits now in our our plan, so in our current chapter, this, that it's, I call transparent because this is like the satellite view. That's just our rural general area, this was our rural conservation area. And those are our villages, we want fifty five percent to be planned for in the villages. As the state goal of having most housing go in the village center. So this is how it sits now, but.
How does this overlap with our historic districts?
Historic districts still can exist, obviously, um, in a lot of cases, the villages will align with those to our districts or be a little bigger. But you have your policies and.
So it can still insist, but you're, this is not taking that in consideration.
It doesn't affect this or districts, those are still mapped as they are, that won't change. The state designation will just get bigger, so.
So when we're talking. Zone it within infillings.
Yep.
And we have a historic designation.
I mean, you can still build new housing in historic. Village centers, right?
Well, yeah, but that. But that means also we lose. Oftentimes to expand, you have to lose something to expand.
You're not gonna lose this store center, I guess I'm just confused as to.
So I guess my question is, if I go up and down the. The village here.
Yep.
I can't develop this unless I. Lose something, we have little parcels, but to really de- develop it. Yeah, I have to lose something to expand.
So you're saying that the character.
Houses gotta go.
You don't have to tear down a house. We didn't.
I I don't gonna get through, that's in theory, but in reality. In order to make space. We have to lose some.
I mean. You could take, and in the same sense, you could take a larger home, a single family home and turn it into a duplex, but you still keep the exterior, you still keep.
I see with that.
Character, so also per the statue, any single family home can now be. A duplex and be totally fine for state statute. So.
As long as they can expand their septic.
As long as the septic is is, um. Ready for more capacity. Which is great, because in a lot of cases, you can meet your housing target. In theory, if every house is centered to duplex.
Yeah.
Easy peasy. So. None of this requires in when we're calculating. The numbers for housing target, none of. Nothing removed is factored. So. This is additional. Buildings, it's not the duplex, this is not. Tearing down an old house and building two smaller houses, this is. What there is space for in addition to what they're currently. Which means there's plenty of space. In theory.
In theory. Are you are you taking comments about?
This is the current map, we're gonna look at the new map. Proposed draftman. Is a little more colorful. So. We can see that transparent rural general area got smaller. But so did the green. Conservation areas. The villages got a little bigger. Um, Tunbridge Village. Went north a little bit on the Stratford Road. Um. North Tunbridge is now a village. And then you've got. The blue, which is a pretty large area. That is the the rural forest. That kind of in between a lot of your farms, larger parcels. Forest blocks. That are high far even the highest priority. Um, all those factors to make it a little more rural than these areas, but a little. Less or a little denser than the new green area. It's like your ridgeline for here.
Yeah, so where are you, when I look at this map, where are you promoting that we put the housing?
So fifty five percent should be planned for in these red. Village areas. And that's, you know, there is some river core and floodplain, but because there's already existing development. We'll smooth that all in.
Try to deserve the rest of it as forestry agriculture.
Yeah, there can be some low density residential, I mean, there's no, nothing against that in any of these areas, so low density residential plus ag and tourist. This is primarily, it's already broken up enough to where there isn't a significant potential, there's some larger parcels that there is, but. Again, if you're following this road. With a bunch of little residential blocks up here, there's nothing saying you can't have fun there at all, I mean, farms can exist everywhere and they should exist anywhere. But. General sense of the area is more of a, a general rural.
Oh, city block up on, uh, Turkey Run.
With my climate.
You know, I guess I should know the answer to this question, but how do you define ag land?
So when we're looking at these maps, we're looking at, uh, the data we have.
Soils.
We're looking at, we were looking at soils, and a lot of cases, though, the soil maps. Pointed us to make the villages into the ag areas, because a lot of the best soil is in the river, the river floor. And all the villages are in the river floor, so that's kind of. Already chopped up parcels that already have developed. So really what we're looking for for ag land is if there's good soil, yes, we'll look at that spot. If it's current use or if it's a larger ten to twenty acre. Plus parcel.
That's all it takes?
Well. There's also, you know, is there already a field there that's pretty large, is it already being used for ag, is it a large enough field? To be used for crops, crop land, we also have pasture land, you know, hay fields. But if it's, you know. A ten to twenty acre hayfield or pasture, but it's surrounded by a bunch of smaller houses. It'll fit more into the world general.
So this is, this is just a vague area.
It's big.
It's very.
Policies.
At the end of the day.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of ag land, we have people that make it ag land. We have people that make this firm.
Yeah.
We have people.
Hmm.
That make this. It's not the land itself without the soil, the bottom land has the soil.
Yeah.
And these hillside firms is the people.
Yep.
That make the funds.
No, I I definitely understand that, I mean, that's where like a lot of Vermont Ag now is a lot of, and that always has been a lot of livestock. Because there isn't always the best soils in these hills, but.
And they've taken forestry into a a higher consideration with these new.
Well, that's.
Actions.
That's where it got and get gets mixed with the forestry, because we're also looking at our forest blocks, I'm thinking about. What area is also best suited for. Forestry operations, but forestry operations mostly probably still in current the green. Um, the state name for the areas ag and forestry means that you can have your. Low density forest blocks and your farmlands in one kind of in between area. So it's more like a sandwich between the world general, you know, rural conservation, rather than it being. Uh, two distinct. Areas, it's a little confusing. I don't know really why they went with that route, but. Um, it's more of your working lands.
Town like this where it is a working landscape.
Exactly, right, like it's it's like internally, we call it the working lands area. Because forestry nag is kind of. It's a long name that. Might raise some questions, but that's just like the the land that. Predominantly is working land, there there of course is working it everywhere, but if that's predominantly rural residential versus predominantly. Working, or that's kind of where these, so we followed these roads and these valleys to think, okay, if it's higher density for residential. It might be rural general, it's not gonna say this is all village. But it's already broken up to the point where it's less viable for. Larger scale agriculture. Or if it's not current use, or if it's not able to be in current use, a lot of them are steep slopes as well, you're following these. Sweet valleys versus these flatter kind of like up here, it's a little flatter. You've got more of that potential. Good.
So the inset, the square one closest to you.
Yeah.
Um, it looks like that's, uh. The dotted line is one ten, is that correct?
Correct, this is one ten and then.
So I I can't point to it, I don't have long enough arms, but that area, um. Looks like Stratford Road goes up there. I mean, that. Is that is expected to be built upon, then?
It's not expected to be built upon, um, it is really steep here.
It's all theory. This is why.
It's not the terrain here, this.
It's already built on, no. There's it's already built on.
There's parcels here.
All through that area.
So we followed up until the small parcel stopped. There's like five or so houses that's right here, right where the cutoff is.
Yeah, and that white road is 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 recreation road, no, no.
This is, yeah.
Yes.
So.
Goes up a little bit.
So isn't that where the town? You know that's about.
Town field is just past it.
It's not forest, you mean the.
No, 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 the the ball.
Yeah, right field is right past it, and then you've got the town garage. Or the sand pit right up there. So we did cut it there, because you're not gonna be building any houses up. Uh, but most of your housing potential is in North Tunbridge. So that's kind of where there's very few spots for infill. In this area, but we expanded it there just because you did have the municipal buildings up here, existing density here. It just that's your your smoothing to make a a consistent area that. Makes sense on that, um.
So you can tell your neighbor, Brenda, they can. Put a couple of those right up along here. Yeah, we're putting duplexes in.
I mean.
Moving some trailers in.
But the other way to twenty twenty seven, uh, if it was to trigger act two fifty.
That's another way, sorry about my stomach growling.
But, um. Yeah, the the villages, that's. Only if it triggers act two fifty, well, it's actually not that damn thing, so a new house here or there. This won't affect. That, so something to build a single house. Anywhere, uh, it's really just. The town could plan for in the the next town plan update. To make the village areas. Match these as closely as possible. And then to make sure that you have. Um, the housing target in your town plan for your next update, it's a little change now. And then. Plan to to basically write in the chapter. To plan to accommodate fifty five percent of that in Tunbridge and.
Yes, so that goes back to my other question of the historic, that's that's where I find the biggest challenge is, how do you? Um. Grow your town centers. And maintain that historic value.
And that can be a challenge, especially because you don't wanna have the character change, you don't wanna get rid of an historic buildings. But all we have to do is plan for. We don't have to actually.
Do it.
Do it, because. I mean, we don't have the money to build new housing in the state, sure, they don't wanna build new housing themselves, so.
So you're telling us with it, when we write our plan, it's all in theory, we don't actually have to anticipate that it's ever going to happen.
Yes, you just have to.
It's just in theory.
It's the plan.
We're not actually. Looking to attain a goal. It's just in theory.
As long as you plan for it and allow it to happen, if someone were to, let's say, buy. A large parcel in North Tunbridge, and they wanted to build three duplexes, you can't prevent that, yeah. But this isn't saying that you have to give up. Your historic buildings or your historic area, like mo- again, most of the open land is in North.
Correct.
So. We're not, we're talking about bulldozing.
Yeah.
This main strip here.
It's got to see that that was. That's the spot.
That's really the spot, there's a lot of larger fields that aren't currently being used for ag, that are really close to the village, that you could easily build a. You know, a shared private road and have three duplexes, and then there you go, you're. Way, you know, that's better than nothing.
That's also, I mean, storage.
There is some good soil left here, I will say, um, that's why we kept. The four should add as close as possible to the village and then to make this all rural general, because there are some working lands, there are some. You really wanted to keep the village. I wouldn't say hemmed in, but. Have that balance between the housing, but also. Keeping a compact and keeping the ag viability up. That's why I like. We're not, forgot the name of. That road, is that?
What you're marking with name?
Yeah, so kind of where the the speed limit lowers.
Yeah. That's just outside of Tun- Tun- Tunbridge.
Yeah.
North.
Well, so we we stretched the village down a little bit, because already broken up field, there's already a house, so I think, okay, you can have a little bit of infill here. But we didn't wanna expand the village up. With the hill, because then that would really get into your ag lands. So we're really trying to consider all these different factors and making some maps.
So this, a lot of this planning is if everything is flat, because it is not flat to get outside of the village.
Oh, yeah, that we understand, I mean, most villages in our area like that.
With your theory.
Yep.
The theory is that things are flat.
Well, we also look at the slope, we were looking at thirty five percent. Slope, as that's too steep to build on. So when we're looking at what can go where, if there's a lot of that, we just, that parcel isn't considered. So we're not looking at the river, the floodplain, we're not looking at thirty five percent slope enough, we're looking at what's in between those two. And what kind of infill and new housing can be built. With what exists with those constraints, so. Yeah, slope isn't. Pounded and neither is flood. And you could easily, in theory. Meet the housing target even without redeveloping a bare ground. You don't even need to do that, and you can still meet the housing target. Um, not that you would, because it's all floodplain, but. Um. It's again, it's it's a planning goal, it's a planning process. Um. But yeah, so really what. Uh, we're gonna do, I'm gonna leave both these maps with you. And I can also send the PDFs, it would have, I would have been able to share it if it was cooperating. Screen as well, but I'll send the PDF to the planning commission. You can send those to whoever, we also have a link to our. A a live map on our site. That shows all the towns we've met with so far and how these areas. Look across the town boundaries. So there's some things that might not make sense, looking at this map, like there's a little bit here, but that gets a little. Spanded, this kind of connects down into Broylton, there's things that make sense more across town lines that from, if it was just Tunbridge making this map. You, it wouldn't look like this, especially in the rural areas, I understand that. So. I'll also send a link to that, but if there's any suggestions or considerations that you want me to make of looking at this map tonight. That I can go back to. And tomorrow morning. Make some changes. Um, based on what I've said about the areas. What would make make more sense that I might have overlooked? That I may not have considered. Any. Yeah, any changes that. You might want us to make. I'm definitely open to hearing. Them and I will.
Think we just ponder your map for a while.
Yeah, that's totally fair, um, that's why we're gonna leave it with you, uh, if you you have my email, so. You've wanted to take a Sharpie and say, oh, you know. This up here makes no sense, I mean, it's not a paper road, but. Let's just say maybe here, like, there's a couple of large parts up here. Let's just draw a line and say. Maybe make this all blue. If that all fortune add. You could do that, take a picture of it, send it to me, I'll see what I can do, the the transparent, the rural general and the blue portion ag are really easy. The switch between as long as it's not checkerboarding. Um. Like one parcel blue, one parcel clear, one parcel blue, we don't wanna do that, but. Um like one parcel blue, one parcel clear, one parcel blue. We don't want to do that, but um as long as it's consistent. We can make those and then the blue to green as well is very easy to do.
So where was the old map?
Old map's here. We'll leave, so we'll leave both of them. You can look at them side by side. You can draw all over that.
Can we actually go from the blue back to the green?
You could if you wanted, but.
I like green. I like green too.
I mean, try to keep it really colorful, so like like maybe people were here like big fans of blue.
There's too much blue, not enough green. I wish it was more green.
We could add more.
In all balance, yeah.
I mean, especially with the the ridge line here, you could add more green. For the region, there's some towns that wanted a lot less green.
Yeah, well, that's not our business.
I mean, the reason here is because there's a lot of really small parcelization. So those are all sub ten acre lots. So that's kind of more of a rural residential, even though it's the ridge line, it's a forest block. But the existing development kind of superseded the.
I've been looking at. And I would suggest we have that being Hamlet in South Tunbridge. It's a historic district. There's business there. There's a housing complex.
Okay. I will.
And the churches there.
Yes.
And a communities.
Okay. Yeah, that was one of the ones. But it's still, you know, hamlets are basically the the same policies on our. Chapter as rural general, and that is rural general. So marking somebody as a hamlet. For for our purposes, anything could be a hamlet if the town wants it. So we can definitely make South Tunbridge a hamlet. That's not a big problem. And then there are these gray areas too, where it's like what you're saying with more green, we could easily expand that. Green area over here, we can expand it a little bit over here. I wouldn't put green on room one ten.
Why not?
Well. Because of the density that already exists.
Yeah, we should do whatever we want.
I'll consider it.
Yeah, let's look at it and we'll get back to.
I'll take some pictures of these areas and I'll take notes and when I get home, I'll make those. I'll I'll add the hamlet and I will look at those areas. And then anything else.
Let us look at this to improve.
Um you suggest you have until really until December, but the sooner the better to get the suggestions back. Um again, blue to green and clear to blue. Really easy to to change. I wouldn't go from clear to green, but. Those in between areas that have boardroom are are easy enough to change because a lot of them share a lot of the same characteristics.
I think that's great. You can leave the map.
And if you want to roll them up, I've got our band. I will also send you. Because it, yeah, sorry that the tag was. I worked in IT. I I could have plugged my own computer. I've worked in IT a few years before, going back to school and that. So I I know how finicky. Well, usually it's me trying to work with people, trying to get presentations and it's not working for them, so. Yeah, I had to reverse the roles for a second there. Yes, thank you so much for letting me present and I look forward to hearing your suggestions. Yeah, I'll I'll make a note to send those to you.
The whole course on remaining.
I'll get you back on your Zoom. All right. Also leave you a thing, art in the base.
Great, thank you. You too, thank you. Okay, so we have a bunch of stuff with a lot of people here that say. So I had that on the agenda next for us because uh based, I just wanted to discuss follow up from our community meeting. And I had some thoughts about what that follow up could look like in terms of a. Recommendation that we as a planning commission could make to the select board sort of next steps, so. We want to do this, anyone who has their own thoughts, we just lay out. What is the work of a planning commission around this? So my sort of takeaways from the meeting were um a couple of things.
So I think your question is, is what are our obligations?
Right.
Now what your takeaways are as much as what are our obligations? What is before us? So.
So we'll get to.
Right, yeah.
So. My takeaway from the community meeting is that we, a planning commission. Our goal would be to move the recommendation to the select board. Our role as a planning commission would be to sort of hear what the community has to say and then. Offer our thoughts to the select boards on how they want to proceed on this, not necessarily. Speaking out a position, but a couple of things I heard, I would like to see the select board follow up on with. Vertex. So that that's kind of where I'm going with this. Um and the most important thing that I heard. I would, I would like to recommend for the select board to definitely look into bond options should we be going forward. And that would be the bond to remove it if it became obsolete.
Yes.
So I would not want to have any, I would not want to. Before without downside protection on that, so I want to make sure we had that recommendation of the select board and they could look into what they would need to do for that. I did have a brief chat with John O'Brien, and he's agreed on that. Very interested in that. Um.
So did you find any more about that or would that involve?
No, I think that our. Goal was certain request that the select board look into that. So. We just bring that to this one. Yeah, so that's kind of one one place I see a goal and then um. I think that there's some missing information that was on us that we don't have, such as. A more detailed look at what a tower would give in terms of coverage. We were sort of told, you know. Great coverage, great coverage. Apache in some places, but what? And and I think that. Somebody asked the question, he said, oh, he didn't come prepared with that information. So I'd like to. Go back to him and get that information, because we will take a look at that.
I asked a question for that. Uh so on on the power grid, their their idea was to have. Enough for for so many spots, basically. It'd be really nice if we maybe. Like if if they could give us a protected maps of like each. Height there, because essentially as as you go down, coverage gets worse as you get more buildings. Be kind of interesting to see if they could show us like, you know. Or like, let's say he he gets there, gets there, putting up there.
Where we get her foot.
I also, one thing takeaways I really took from that meeting was the fact that they were talking about that three G is now obsolete. But that we were all using three G like three years ago, so building a tower that's exclusively five G. What does that really do? Um if 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 the technology is, it's going to continue rapidly progressively changing as it seems to be changing. So that's one thing that I think could be important to bring up. And the other thing is, is that clearly Verizon was funding the tower. But the company is building the tower and wants to make it. Accidentally more hires, so they could add more and more servers to it, so they can get more of that essentials, if my understanding to it. So I would be interested in asking them what would happen if we bring this to the two big providers, you know, AT AT and Verizon or. Et cetera, et cetera, because maybe no one likes to monopolize the cell phone system, but. There are people who use two providers, so if we could look at the outreach of productivity and the progress that means at a shorter tower. Would be an interesting option.
You got to do that. You have to look at increments and what the coverage area is for each increment.
And that's that, that's really what we need to see is, okay, this height we get this, this height we get this. And up food, and I I feel that's a fair thing to ask.
Yeah, and he and he mentioned that it'd take more than one tower.
Well, and that's, and so the thing, I guess what I would say is. What is the big picture? You know, what is the big picture? You guys are sitting here. What is the big picture?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, how many towers? What is the projected plan? You know, is it gonna take to get full coverage? Is it gonna take? No, because I I don't believe they have the data. I don't believe that they can give us the information that we want.
No.
I think until we get.
They can even make a map that shows, none of them can make a map that shows their actual coverage area.
Until they get the tower up and say, oh, we got. Coverage here, we didn't think it was here, but we don't have it here. We thought it'd be here.
And when we, when the fire department went through, we had a map done for our coverage area. That from when we put up a tower and it was, it was nowhere near the what. So it's no matter what, no matter what we do, it always, there's too many variables to be able to really.
Yeah, so how do we plan, plan for the future? We know we're gonna need more. But what do we need?
Right. So to uh along those lines, Shane, um. It seems like they're trying, maybe trying to do everything with the hundred and seventy six foot tower. And 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 if more towers are coming in, then that is a strong argument for making this one lower. Which which would be consistent with the town plan as well to 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 make it less intrusive. Um and I wanted to know what the, what the the planning commissions take on on the town plan language is regarding. But certainly, you you know, one tower isn't gonna do it, but this is the first one, so they may be like trying to go for the gusto. And uh and and to Tess's point, you know, fewer, fewer um. Fewer transponders, fewer layers, fewer, you know, service providers. Uh would make would make sense and also make it lower, which again, would be consistent with the town plan.
The the interesting thing that I find, I'm gonna give my ten cents worth here, that I find with this site. Is I personally believe that it's the least environmental impact per site. They're not gonna, there there's no removing the trees, there's a half. Road there that they can develop just enough to get their job done, but the environmental impact is minimal. The impact is our visual impact and in all the residual impact. So. My question would be, what other sites are, I feel that they've done a good job to that point. The environmental impact is minimal. Can we choose other sites that are similar?
Actually, it's it's not minimal, because the amount of land that they would just hold it full. The amount of land that they were disturbed with putting in over a third of a mile road. And the fact that it's crossing a wetland and that it's steep grades down and up, that that's not.
I I I understand where you're at. And I appreciate it. I respect it. I I respect it. I respect it. But when we're talking about the Drew lot, we're talking about cutting trees and we're talking about the impact, the disturbance. It's totally a different, different number. It's the overall, I I understand the land is already clear. Okay, the land, but when we break ground and we cut those trees, there's no return. So that's what I see is.
I'm not talking about the Drew lot. I never, I didn't, I never mentioned. But but it's off the table.
Okay.
Um for as far as I'm concerned, um but but I'm so I'm focusing on the environmental impacts of this site. I don't think it's minimal. It's my point. And I think regarding two forty eight A, there are some considerations uh in that. Uh that that certainly apply to uh and concerns in that, in two forty eight.
Can you find another site in town that would be as minimal impact as this?
Better find the people who want to, who want to do it too.
But it's something we need, and this is not about me. It's about my neighbor. It's what others need. If I wanted to talk about me. My life, I work in the woods. I have no cell coverage. Ninety percent of the place is where I work. I have a cell phone, wonderful deal. But guess what? I work by myself. If something happens, guess what? I can look at that cell phone and it says, huh, no service. What good is it? I can have a tree on top of me. It doesn't matter. It's not about me, though. It's about my neighbor. It's about what's good for others and what's the least amount of impact for everybody. I want to help everybody. I want to see everybody do well, but I want the least amount of impact. So if if somebody can show me that there's a less amount of impact, I understand it's not what I want to see.
We also have a town plan that can, that has language about this, so I'm just.
But it also talks about good communication or enhancement of communication. So we have a balance we have to work with. So Shane's saying is, are there other areas? I know you talked a lot about Drew lot, which.
In past tense, right?
Was past tense, because it really for me, because I I thought, has he been up there recently? And I've never seen.
Well, I think something interesting about the Drew lot was that it's town land and so then the income.
I realize that.
That's the thing.
But go walk up there and you're like, holy cow. Let's hear from. Maybe I misunderstood what this guy said the other night. But I think he said that he didn't look at the town plan. Did anybody hear that?
Yeah.
So what's the point of having a planning commission? If somebody like that can come into this town and and spend two years. Not be able to pronounce the name of the town and has never looked at the planning commission or at the town plan, this is scary. Because he's not the only person, this is what's going on in the world right now, okay? I, that is the issue for me more than the cell tone. Like, where does that stop? Outsiders coming in with a plan, there is corporate America combined with the government and just saying, okay. We're gonna do this. And then announcing it in a town, in in a meeting with everybody. I thought it was really. Amazing to me that that happened. That's my concern. I think people look.
Up on uh Rust Hill, there are a few roads, there are two antenna sites. Up there, if you drive up Rust Hill Road, the only way that you would notice, and this is, they've been out there for a while, the only way that you would notice. That they are a cell phone site and a a tower site is because there's a placard on there that says. This is all this self down site. Other than that, you, five years later, you can't tell that there was, that they. Got big rigs and equipment up in there. Um there's. The one site that uh one of our uh radios on, it's a four wheel drive to get in. Do it. It's not, it's totally been reclaimed by nature when it opened moves. It's not like it's. It's clouded and there, it's not, it's not kept up, kept up as as it was when it was new.
And this is in South Arlington, you said? So that was making me, when I was listening to this whole thing, I was, there's something I have servicing in South Arlington, right? Right, it's Murphy Service.
Yep.
I have looked everywhere for a tower and you're right, you can't see it. You can't see it on the skyline, you can't.
Only place you can see it is just before you get to Vultures, it's right up the climb. And that's, and that's another one where that one's gonna be way closer. If you're driving through Royalton Village, you can ju- barely see it.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I had to go quick was the size of the balloon that they put up. I didn't realize that Mike Ware said it, it was a big balloon. It was a good sized balloon. So that balloon was up there. If it was a four foot, five foot around balloon, and then I think you said it's about seven feet.
This is about.
So the size of that balloon, then that three, three or four feet to that, and it's really uh from a mile away, you're really not seeing. And you're going from a rented balloon to a gray structure, you're really not seeing it unless you really look. But the balloon was one point. It was just a point. Right, 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 but, uh. But I'm saying that in the skyline, that balloon was that big. Versus the, the pictures that you had that showed a huge. Huge sight.
Well, I said it was an approximation, and I, I, I do wanna say that the photographs he showed. I'm a photographer, I've taken a lot of pictures, those are taken with a wide angle lens.
Yeah.
Cause I stood in those same places and took pictures with a, with a quote normal lens.
But even on your picture, it was very hard to see the, the, the balloon.
That's why I drew in a structure, an approximation of the structure.
Right, and I'm just saying that if that balloon was four feet and we're now going to seven feet, you're not gonna notice a huge. A huge cell phone tower from a mile away.
The thing is, if, if there's an ability to talk to planning commission over the talks off, they'll be kind of the height of their tower, because one of my arguments was that. You can't see it, because I'm pretty sure it's like seventy-five feet. But that's just what I am out.
It probably depends on the need of your coverage area.
Yeah, yeah, so that, I think that's like.
You know, unfortunately, that's that we don't have the answers to.
Yeah.
Cause that, you know, if they could give us what we asked, the coverage, what do we get? On the height? And say, you know, all of a sudden you go up that extra feet, you get all this coverage, well, then it makes sense, but if you know what, you're going an extra forty feet. And you're not getting. What is it making me say?
I don't know about the design differences too, because that. Russ Hill is very different from the one when you come off exit two in Sharon, which has the multiple transponders on it.
Oh, a lot of things to a Sharon, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Seems like they're too very.
From uh, things of three, when you get off, yeah, towards the old Wheaties, yeah, right off in front of you. There, but you, that's about the only spot, you can just barely see it, I mean.
Yeah, and the Russ Hill, I think they took, you know, like he was saying, he's gotta get line of sight for us to have reception. But Russ Hill is a very high hill and it went right down the valley, like we have a repeater, emergency services has a repeater there. And then shoots it over the caves. We had to have a couple of repeaters, but it comes from the P S apps down there. But it can come right up the valley, so they can, they can adjust the hills according to how the floor is, and that's what you. Someone was telling me, we, in some places in the United States where it's like this terrain. You'd have many towers that could be shorter, but there'd be a lot of them, so they could cover it, but we don't have the people here. You know, and I think they're trying to catch the group of people that are here. The planning commission is not a law, we're not a statute, unfortunately, it's a plan. And there were a lot of things mentioned in our plan about. It's been a concern of, of all us, John, Simon, myself, communications has always been a concern for us. And, and we mentioned it all the way through here.
Read it.
You know, I thought it was disrespectful, he hadn't read the town, the town plan, he hadn't read the regional plan.
So, is, are there any other, is there anyone we haven't heard from that has just like commented or anything?
It seems like we're done with the first proposal we've been given, and I'm looking into any other options. And like, as the planning commission, shouldn't we be looking to cite these towers, because we know we're gonna need many of them? And like, seeing our landowners who are open to doing that, and like, working within the town plan. Instead of just taking the first option we get from a house city corporation.
So. Rudy, you may be able to help, help with this question. So unfortunately, I think the reason why, correct me if I'm wrong. Why they didn't even look at our plan or don't really care about our plan, because they don't have to ask us.
Yeah.
It goes to the public, explain this.
The safety. Public utilities.
Public utility score.
The regulatory body, so our town plan has some bearing on the decisions of the regulatory body. Vertex Towers is not the regulatory body, they're the developer, so they, for better or worse, I totally agree. I, I find it offensive. But they are under no obligation.
Also, I think he said, and I'm part of hearing, I might be wrong about this, that he didn't know where the next tower was gonna be, did he say that?
Yep.
Yeah, so Shane's point, that they need to know that.
It, it seems like they would know that.
Right.
It, 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 that at some point, they're sitting behind the door saying, okay, we're gonna have one here, here, and here, if these are our sites. This is where we wanted to go, to tell me that they don't, eh. I don't necessarily know. But the point from their standpoint, as, as a developer. They don't have to look at our plan, is that right or is it wrong? No, it's not right, but it's.
Well, I, well, my, my understanding is that they, um. That they will take that into consideration, as well as what the planning commission select board and residents in the public comment period have to say about it. They, they will take those un- in, in, under consideration. So it's not like it's, you know, it's there and they're not gonna, they're gonna ignore it completely, and we can certainly have that look at. And, and uh, you know, invite them more to give more, more weight to it. During that public comment period.
I don't think I have as a planning commission member, I don't know if I have the capability of to be able to pick sites. As an engineer.
Where you can talk to your neighbors.
Yeah, but.
See if anyone's interested.
Well, and you can.
I can too.
Yeah, all of you, you don't have a lot of time, but I.
So they did that, they did that.
And they have to have population to pay for it.
And everybody got stuff in the mail, and we probably threw it out, didn't read it, but it's, everybody did that, and they could have submitted their. Name and information. And, and hey, this is available. Um. I, I don't recall what the entity was, but that was, that's what happened, it's already been done, and if somebody wanted their property. Or felt that they were. Eligible, then, then they would have submitted something, I think that this person or this company is putting a tower there because. They have the best coverage area, the biggest population of Tunbridge. So it took years for me to get that micro tower out here. Through Verizon, and I won't bore you with all the details of it, but it was, it was a long process. And they, they, they installed that. Didn't, didn't charge us anything, that was their deal. Because the studies that were done over a few years period, they knew that there was enough of a demand here that they needed that. And so they're probably doing the same thing, this, this, this stuff going on from, from that mountain south. All the time, so that's, that's their grade, if you're a restaurant, you're not gonna serve just one meal, you're gonna have. Four, five, or six different meals, so they're probably, I can see how they wanna put. Verizon and T-Mobile and whatever else on, on the same thing to, to, to service as many people as they can. I don't blame them for that, but it's, it's not, we didn't make any money off this, you know. They're didn't touch it, it's not on their property, but it, you know. I think that they're putting that there, that was their number one priority, Tunbridge, because that provides the best coverage for the highest population.
I think that, that already has coverage, that's my problem with that tower too, is it, it's duplicating coverage in many cases. From the map that he showed, in my. You know, I, I don't have coverage.
I don't, I, this is not, this tower's not.
No, in fact, when John called me when they put this in, and kept saying, go and get your cell phone, you should have coverage now, and I. No, if I walk around, I get one bar, I'm not saying that it's perfect. Oh, no, I don't, I, but there is already a certain amount of coverage. Well, I covered from, I covered all the way up to my house.
Well, that's great.
But I'm just saying, um, that it's duplicating that.
Well, so, I think, I think also, we don't, they're filing on June tenth with the public utility commission, isn't it?
I, he, he thought of, well, well, they are entitled to.
Okay.
He said at the meeting that he thought it would be in July.
Yeah, he said June or July.
So.
But they are entitled, so it would not surprise me either.
So if he filed on June tenth, we can't sort of. I think, what, I guess what I think is like, this, this company has come in and they've identified our town, you've heard him say Verizon. Doesn't care about Tunbridge, they care about America, they want a map that has dots of towers that are interconnected across America, that's what's driving them. They hired these state developers, and he doesn't care about Tunbridge or other plans, and it doesn't matter to him, he's the developer. So I'm not saying that, so in a way, we're all kind of irrelevant to what they're trying to do. So that said, I think the, the best thing we can do as a, as a planning commission and select board is try to just. Slow the process down a little bit, make some recommendations to the select board about investigating a bond, assuming this gets pushed through. Expand as much as possible this public comment period, so people can like really show up, have more community meetings. And maybe get some of this across to him. In the meantime, I am very interested in getting the details he did not come to the meeting with, that people want to know. Show me details, show me roads, show me bars, show me the tower dropped ten feet off, what does that give us, drop fifty feet off, what is that, I mean. And also, like, people are saying, what's the build out plan? One tower does that do the town to, you know, kind of maybe hold us into the fire and say. What do you think in your visioning, like how many tower, you know, so I just, I think we need to get. The more details from him, and he said he would provide them, so I would like to go after him for that, and then. I think our role is to make that recommendation to the, to select board, to also recommend that they look heavily at. The bond, so that we, we understand what that would involve with the town. And in my view, just kind of try to slow roll it a little bit, so we can collect the information and everybody can just kind of have time to think about it. I don't see that it's. Going to be easy to, you know. People would wanna to stop it, I also, you know, when I look at our town plan. Yeah, it kinda has. Both sites are represented here, and so does the town plan, we, we do want coverage, we want emergency services to have coverage. We want people to be able to move to the area, not only have housing, but have the ability to work from home. Have coverage, but at the same time, we wanna protect, you know, the landscape and not have. Uh, you know, be sensitive to the moral nature and not putting in roads where there shouldn't be roads, so I think. The town plan speaks to both of that, and to my mind, it's not. You know, clear cut, I'm trying to keep my, it's not my personal opinion, it's just what I think we have to do as a place, so. Anyone else on the, on the, just wanna weigh in?
I, I appreciate that, uh. Yeah, I think, I think we all here is, we, if, if, if we come together as a community, we, we see the importance of all of it. But there's some unanswered questions, and I think maybe, maybe did a good job of.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, no, that was it.
Very good.
Uh. I think, no, because it is within the plan, and both sides are represented within the plan, and we need to come to an agreement. For everybody that works for everybody, but yeah, hold the, hold them accountable.
And I think I, I appreciate your clarity on like what the planning board can do, because I don't think we're being asked. Do we agree with the thing that's, but that's not something we are going to be asked to weigh. Um, but we have the opportunity to request a select or do a few things, and we have the opportunity to encourage public comment. And maybe that's something that, that is important for us, is that people can do this together. To take those questions.
And you guys can reach out, I mean, we don't have, we don't have any money. In our dog, you can reach out and talk to people the same as we can, as townspeople. Ask them, they're probably gonna be, can't be up in the Stratford Row on the top, they've gotta be worried. Somebody's gonna have to look at this, that's a fact.
Well, ultimately, the body, the decision-making body, at this point in time is the P U C. And so when, when that application goes in, it's a short timetable, it's a thirty day comment period. The only thing that the town is given preference on is an intervenor status, which. I'll leave alone for now, but anybody can, um, be, make comments. And they are required to read those. And a lot of the questions that are being asked now are, are very legitimate questions. That I think they should be considered, so. I, I would recommend that the planning commission also submit those questions. But I think also, anybody in this room can submit the same questions, there's, anybody can submit comments.
And, and that's probably the other thing, if we submit our questions, but others within the room submit their questions as well, if it's a most same question multiple times. It's probably gonna have more weight.
Right.
Uh. So maybe the information that you say that he said is forthcoming, is a forthcoming, is that something the planning commission goes back to him and says, where's the information?
I think that that is something I can do, and I will do.
Or a recommendation to the select board to do, they have more.
I can make the recommendations, like order, John and I together, saying, hey Fran, we need.
But he did come to the plan, she needed.
He did, and he also said that he would provide that detailed information, so I don't see why we can't. Have it, I feel like. You know, this is a.
I think you could also make it as a public comment on the P U C, which would insist that that information actually could give them plenty of people in that decision-making power. I think both, both are true, that like, we can ask her, if there's not much we can do with it, like if he provides it.
We wanna share it, and then I think.
Sure, but they have to share, same, right? So I think one of the comments could be in, in the presentation meet to the town. This information was missing, you would expect, the P U C would expect to see it in the application from. This corporation, he gives it to us, sure, we can share, but that's not really, but he's required to provide it.
Yeah.
And we hold his speech to the fire through the P U C process.
Good.
Thank you. Come back here.
Yeah, I, I have a whole, I'm a good fan of everyone's. Hello, you. Um. Um, so I just, when this whole issue came up, I just. Looked at the little bit of the structure at the P U C and what towns had done, who were. Concerned, not just about a single cell tower, but the build out, cell tower, and I found that the town of Peachum has an ordinance. And that the, the ordinance, I don't know who develops the ordinance in some towns, and it's probably a very complex process. But it, it does carry more weight than a town, you know, a town plan. Um, so I, I, I wonder if it would be a good idea. You know, to actually, for us, for people to see, to read the Peachum ordinance, because it might inform questions. And if, you know, it, it might be a little late in the process, but it might be very good information. And they get it, so it's quite, it's quite legal and it's healthy.
I have a copy of that, I just added to it. And yeah, um, I just wanted to mention this, I appreciated your, your comments and, um. That you said more public meetings would be, um, helpful, and I would hardly, uh, encourage you. To have another meeting, especially since we're talking about a thirty day window here, it's pretty narrow, um. And I know your next meeting would be, I don't know, when in July?
If we were to skip or July.
So I just wanna say too, that the, the reason the P C invited Vertex Towers was because that is. Part of the rights and responsibilities that came with this, the select board or the planning commission have the right to request a hearing. During the sixty day advance notice. I don't believe there's a public hearing process in the thirty day window.
No, I've just meant about this, 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 the planning commission, why couldn't they just. As Amy suggested, have an, another public meeting, not inviting Vertex necessarily, but just. For the townspeople to get up, uh, just, just to learn more about this, and maybe, maybe we get more information from Vertex in the meantime as well.
I mean, we could also, can invite Brandon to shirt, I don't know if he would.
No, nothing.
Well, I think some of this, what we have to. Is we, we have to learn how to plan for the next. Okay? Even if we don't, there's gonna be things that we miss on this, unfortunately, but what we have to learn is how to plan for the next. So that's where I wanna heads up on the build out. Uh. I would love to see a grand plan, somebody's gotta have it, and that shows us full coverage for everything. In the different areas, um. So, how do we, we learn from this? How to move forward, and how to plan for the next one, um, how to do it better. I think the individuality, the only thing I, I was, I don't wanna see this. I love the energy, how it's changing. I love the energy, how it's changing here, we're working together. What I did not like at that meeting is I get, for a little bit, I felt like we were going against our neighbors. And that we do not do. We've had enough of that in this town and as long as I sit here, I will stand up and. Stand for that, we need to take care of our neighbors. What this town is, is all of us and every one of us, that is who this town is. We help our neighbors, we don't stand against our neighbors and so. If somebody. We can't take it against somebody because they want to do that with their land, that's their right, their business. As a grand scheme, how do we make it better for everybody? Everybody. Everybody's view, everybody's service, everybody, not just individuals, this is not an individual thing. This is for everybody. The and and guess what, I love to be able to sit in this room and almost be able to say at my age. Guess what? The future is not ours. The future is in the younger generations, how do we do it better for them? They're gonna demand this, it's the only thing they know, I know it from my own children. It's what they know, they do not know a life without it. So we have to figure out a way to provide it and do it right.
Do we have any statistics on how many homes or people in the community have access to wifi?
You mean broadband or what?
Like how many people have that?
Everybody has access to it. All has.
Yes.
Access to it.
It's in the mix of the conversation. It's it's hard to get, we we know that a lot of people don't, you feel like a lot of people probably do according to the map. What map? Um, like cell phones, no, I'm talking about broadband. We see E C fiber or whomever Comcast or, you know, there's other people that provide it, just that they're the E C fibers the best.
So some of what we have is that unfortunately, lower incomes. Will make a choice. That I have my phone. I choose not to have a landline. They can only afford one thing, so they go that line. That's kind of where we're.
What you're asking is where, where has E C fiber built out?
She's just asking the accessibility, who has access to the.
Has access to.
Because they have a map of which road they've gone up and it's on that road, you would have. You could have E C fiber if you were willing to pay.
To pay to, like they wanted to charge me fifteen hundred, I'd get it, you stay down there on the pole.
It's not necessarily like a replacement or cell phone coverage.
I don't see it to be placement, but it is in addition to, or it is something, it's not like.
Yeah, like I'm like on on my house, I have like a half dozen access points spread across my hill, but you know. The number of people that are doing that is. Right, you know, you know, I, you gotta be crazy.
He's got a direct line to Starlink.
I am, I I mean, I have no idea if there are models for this, if it's feasible for this company, but. But I mean, I wonder if, and it's two different things, we're talking about cellular service and broadband, but. I wonder if there's some way to build in from the profits, some subsidies for 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 people who qualify for. For lower income to get some of these services. In part paid for, I know the the feds had a program until twenty twenty four. Uh, that that would do just this, I think they paid a good like half of what it costs, that has been discontinued. Um, there's another one in in place, but I'm not sure about it, I talked to. E C fiber the other day, there is another program in place, but anyway, I just wonder if there's any models, if we could get creative with this outfit and with this. With the P U C possibly to to see about about subsidizing folks so that they do have access to this, because you know, it may be that. They don't even have cell phones in some cases, who who knows, I mean, uh, and and I and I agree, people should be able to have access.
And a lot of you may not know this, but Simon's still here, during the fair. I know it was one of the reasons that John really worked at trying to get this, this repeater down here. Because the bear was getting very limited and it was a concern for us, uh, we've got two way radios. And a lot of the stuff, we can't all be talking on the two way radios if we have people involved. There are other people listening in and we have to be discreet about how we use them. So Simon's talked me into having a cell phone, it's useless at my house and I pay every month for. In case I might go into that area, so we got beeped up. But then Simon, correct me if I'm wrong, with the usage that's happened at the fair, they've maxed it out again.
Yeah.
And they, you know, they're running card things and they're and they're complaining, they can't get service down there, so this would correct that. But also if we had an event, you know, like a, something went really wrong with people down there. We're we're crashed and Simon and I have been talking about the state helping us get what they call COW. And it's a special unit for, I think he told me someone godly sum of eight thousand dollars for the fair that we put up.
That you could just rent.
That we could rent for the fair, but you know, that doesn't make sense either. What's that?
Uh, she was trying to figure out what's to.
It's not a hosting.
Takes it over during the the World Cup, yeah, they bring that over to provide.
An emergency service, uh, for my emergency management has said they might, they might be able to look in the. Providing that for us during the fair, but it they refused last year because of the cost of bringing it here. But anyways, just so you know, during the fair, if we had an event. We we're gonna, we're gonna crash and everybody starts calling their parents and their.
I think, um, I think I'm gonna wrap this up unless anyone has.
That's one more quick, quick comment, so and my feeling is the next round of cell phone towers probably isn't gonna be for another twenty years. That we're, they're gonna look to expand on what we have here. It took, how many, how many years has that one been in South Royalton and Charing and they never even looked at Tunbridge where. Now that they've got populated areas, they're starting to fill in the the less populated areas, so. I think it's gonna be at least another twenty, thirty years before they're even gonna think about trying to to fully cover all of them all.
Which is twenty or thirty? Thirty, I I they can figure that.
There's somebody. Maybe another technology like Starlink.
Yeah, we may be taking that tower right down near the five years.
I also, I would not be surprised if Verizon does not have a grand plan, like I've I've been involved in. Like sort of similar size, like build outs for like another big, like major park and and honestly, it was like. Somebody might have some ideas of what they're maybe doing in one area, but a lot of it is just. They just kind of shotgun it out and hope that it works and then measure once it's there to see maybe. Like, it it's not always like.
Not scientific.
Yeah, it's not.
Well, I think by putting a lot of these comments in the the. P U C that, you know. It might not be scientific, but we at least we kind of go on record, forcing them to say like, hey, well, we want to know what your plan is and then they kind of have to be the ones sitting there going. You know, so I.
There's a solid chance of hook out.
Yeah, but you know, I feel any of the things we ask them, it's it's making, making them work, making them think.
Yeah.
There's no free ride.
Yeah.
So we'll make some of those recommendations to the select board and, you know, I think. I'll just warn, if we want to have more meetings just for community forums, say, not that it's gonna be something we can necessarily invite friends who are have, you know, but just to be heard. Do more of that, I can publicize, we have a planning commission meeting, but you know, we're gonna be addressing some of this. And just, if you have other comments, you can just email me on the.
And it is, you seem open to look at other areas if you guys have places. I mean, it's a short time frame, so you're gonna have to, everybody here is gonna. Put it go down as far.
I'm just, that's just.
And they're they're in agreement, that's all.
I haven't asked, but we find out we had the opportunity to like, we were seeking this, I didn't know.
Yeah, well, reach out, ask, ask and see if it's, see if it's a.
This whole plan of the tower, we weren't notified of it, so like they were.
That's the whole point.
Sixty days to come up with alternative solutions.
Was it way.
They haven't applied.
What's that?
So there's preliminary period and so we had the meeting. And now, now they can apply, now they will apply and then there's, like I said, a very short period of time.
I I appreciate that, it does feel like it was all kind of hush hush and then boom, oh, now we're having this.
They had two years, we got sixty days.
Well, it it, the thing is, it was in the public domain, if you knew where to go find it, but it wasn't. It wasn't, it was, you know. Yeah.
You know, any any butters had noticed and the town did. Uh, I think that was it, they didn't put, they didn't put anything public out there and newspapers were on listservs.
Right.
But it was.
But they didn't, when did they send out contact?
That was four, five years ago.
I remember.
Was it VER- Vertex that did that?
I have no idea, I don't, but but I remember. Well, yeah, I didn't, I looked at it.
They do, they do enough to say, we told you guys, you're just out there, but it doesn't, I as somebody who's just going about your daily business and everything, it doesn't feel like. No, no, that that's how.
Well.
No, so I I do appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, this this is, I mean, the state and the feds are fast tracking this stuff anyway. I mean, all across the country, this, uh, you know, the telecommunications act of nineteen ninety six. Has basically said they had some good lobbyists working for them in Washington and and they pushed this thing through that. Made it like, don't touch, you know, we're gonna put cell towers up and don't try to stop us, basically is what it.
I think part of it was COVID, you know, they realized.
Nineteen ninety six.
No, but I think afterwards with COVID, they realized trying to get.
Everybody, right, everybody had their heads in the phone.
Well, I have, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Okay, there we go, absolutely. I was just looking at the stuff, the stuff I wanted to see. I mean, it checked off some.
And then once you looked at it, I don't.
No, I mean.
I tell you, if I was looking on the conservation.
It was done before this, I think, we lined up and everybody stopped. I'm waiting, we're like.
Well, I mean, they're gonna have to do.
Power line, the power line is gonna take.
Our line, I think they want.
I bet it's more than that, because they don't want.
Power lines, it was worse than mine. If it was forced.
You don't want a tree falling, you're not gonna check on it.
Okay.
You as well.
Our grant, grant is closed out.
Did he get anything?
Well, they're trying to close it out, that's what I'm saying, so.
Our grant is.
Their Sierra's. Completing this, so she, um, is gonna be at the select board meeting next week, it's the tenth. And she is gonna be, this will be the final public input meeting on this grant. And then she's gonna wait. So she emailed to say, please invite the planning commission to attend. Um, she also attached.
Can she send us ahead of time what she said?
That, so, I I have that and I'm gonna share it with you and it's like hundred and seventy nine pages, which is wide enough.
We, we've had a little bit of experience with Sarah, Sierra. She gets hold of us and says, oh, and just a couple of questions and there's ten and they're complicated. Oh, that was really good, can you answer these ten more and then these ten more?
So I I'm I'm gonna forward that around, I just like didn't want to inundate everyone for this meeting, so. But I read it all before next Tuesday. Okay, that's thing one, and the second thing is that, um. I front, I got a energy packet, um, from Two Rivers. And they, basically, they said when we update our next town plan, we should rely on this energy packet to help. Eat requirements for data targets and maps for our updated town plan. It's about energy compliance, so, um. I just kind of put that aside, but the question he had was. Um, will you be starting your town plan update in twenty twenty seven or aiming to adopt it in twenty twenty six? The twenty twenty one town plan does not expire until December fourteen to twenty twenty nine. So it's a little different than I actually had.
Well, we're not gonna start it till twenty seven at least.
We're gonna do the.
So I just wanted to.
We have to figure out what is, you know, what is green.
I want more green.
I I think first we had to do a joke on him and just make it all green or all purple.
I got it, yeah.
I just want to say that meeting the other day was really divisive and he pulled us all back together again, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, I I figured the answer was that we don't, we don't want to aim to adopt in twenty seven, we want to start working on it.
Yeah, ten years. Yeah, and there, that's the reason is we gotta work on the hazard, our work.
I'll tell him.
Just so you know, most of our work is really tedious and boring, once we get into these plans. I shouldn't say that, Rudy, I shouldn't have said it like that, it's really exciting, but it's tedious, it's hard to have your meeting once a week to get it done. Well, it 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 does, I mean, he should divide this up and everybody takes a section, you go do some research with townspeople.
So those are just the two little teeny, you notice this, I. Thank you, that's it, so if you want to try, and I guess, um, as far as the recommendation that Atlantic, uh, select board goes. I'll just. You can try to get a little time on the agenda for the tenth next week.
Yeah. I think that bond thing is really, that's huge for me, because if it does go obsolete sooner than later.
Simon was saying the next build out, he didn't think it would be for twenty or thirty years, he said, well, we really need that bond, because we'd be wanting to remove that first hour that's.
Well, the second one will eliminate the first one, it's just like a total more area, but they gotta have its population.
To to the other point that is probably.
Well, as soon as we.
The chips in our brains.
No, I won't, but you may.
For that subject, right?
Yeah.
I do want us to be careful, like I think part of, at least when I heard of that meeting and then hearing here a little bit. It's this completion with like, that the planning commission somehow has some control. And or like ownership of this private landowners. And so I think that offering us this for town forum doesn't, I I love a town, but like it's fine. But I don't, I'm a little confused as to why the planning commission would be the one supposed to, we don't have, we're not like, we're taking additional. Um, comments to inform and so sort of my original point was like, I understand why everyone is here. But what do we actually, like what I walked away from that meeting was. That we we can give it a positive recommendation, no recommendation or neutral, they're still gonna do it.
I came down tonight, I didn't want us to make, I didn't feel it was our place to give any recommendation and the legal trails thing did me in. I I just didn't think it belonged with us.
So I, so I think that if you're gonna do an, my comment is just, if there's an open forum, I think that's a recommendation to the select board, that there is a desire in what we heard in the town. Additional opportunity for people to meet and discuss and that we did have a positive meeting after a challenging meeting. But that the planning commission is not facilitating the good relationship with Vertex. Like that's not, you know, if someone wants to provide that space, I think that's great, I don't know that the planning mission is the organization that has to be. You know, if someone wants to provide that space, I think that's great. I don't know that the planning mission is the organization that has to be.
And I, I, I agree.
In terms of getting the more detailed information.
You know, do you think? I think the board should ask for it. More select hours, yeah.
But we can, we can recommend that and, and then that doubles it up. If they choose not to, that's their business. We, we've met our obligations.
Well, and that's what I suggested is that these go to the select board, let them.
Yeah, and if they think, yes, we'd like to hear more public comment. Then they should figure out who the right person is to open the.
Well, it's definitely our role to organize the first meeting, except for Fran. Well, it kind of was, as Rudy said.
It kind of was.
Either us, the select board are the two organizations that are given that. That option in the right and responsibilities.
Neither's a hard one, so they can do the next.
But you know, I think it's better to take the conversation off of. Gigantic growing email threads and. And kind of have people.
We gotta shut that down.
It doesn't. So ready one really, because you're, it's, I think it, I mean, it, I, it's fine if people want to have, but if it's a community thing, we want to hear from all sides, that doesn't really. Land itself can email very effectively. So I think then.
Well, and also remember, most of us, we're, we're a board, we're a commission. It's not individuals that should be con, and these two, I never got one. But I think Shane probably got it.
I think it was specific. I think it was specific to the, the folks on there.
Right, now, you were, I bet you were, you were selected. You are selected and, and it's unfortunate that it worked that way.
Well, I was then removed after I asked. Because I, uh, it, it wasn't really from.
So I'm missing this because I was working in, going to this great meeting.
What, what you're missing, Amy was rolling bar into the emails from certain individuals because she had an ear. If you don't give them an ear.
Or they think the planning commission can do more than we can, or that we've got a power that we really don't have.
Because.
Then they can.
He's salesman. I don't think he sent much time in Tunbridge walking around.
What he, what they. I don't know what he was saying.
Anyway, this don't win a lot of friends. I have the impression that she's talking, he's not been here much, like he's a salesman. He does.
Corporate America.
Get a lot out of it.
I think there was a question. But they should true sponsored that meeting and for you, you'd run it and it was nice to see the select board presence there. And I think people appreciate.
Yeah. It's it.
Yeah, no, I was, I, I'm so happy now. Because that I. I, I was glad that John spoke up at the end because that changed the energy in the room. But that was not going in a good place. I just didn't know.
Strong opinions and.
Yeah, but you don't take it out on your name. You, you, you want to focus it on that guy? That's fine. Well, we're not against each other.
He's our neighbor too.
Yeah, he's our neighbor too, but you know what? He come here expecting to get.
And he didn't learn how to say Tunbridge.
Yeah.
I didn't see any of us correcting him. I was enjoying it.
Even after being informed, he couldn't fix it.
Yeah, yes.
And it would be too. Oh, oh, really? Someone said something and he.
Oh, yeah, several times.
Said something and I need, we get to Tunbridge, I need Tunbridge. That happens.
Never been to that for a lot of people that are more excited about.
And, and I'll see again, I actually got a lot out of what he did say. I mean, I kind of knew it was a business proposition that they were, and it was clear. You know, it's servicing for them to make money. The biggest group. They're not gonna put it up on the top of the strapping rope. Because we want it to, because then they can't reach. People are, it's a waste of money.
Clearly confirmed what, you know, was being discussed tonight. He said. We're not looking at this whole listing, but and I just kind of like.
I promise. But I think that he's also. Found a, that a private landowner who is interested in doing this. I, I believe not only did people, myself included, get the postcard that said. Would you like a cell power? But also, there are lots of people who said, no, thank you, that they went and looked and said, this would be great coverage for me to do this here. And they said, no.
Exactly.
So it's not just who has the best option. He says who has the best option who is willing to also have this happen.
And he told us that he had approached, they had approached other possibilities in this area and they returned down. And the wares didn't turn, and I actually. I'm, it would be. I feel like the wares would be a good place to have money come in too. They're just kind of nice. They're good people.
People. And you know, that's where.
I'm sure they're struggling. Way to, to add here is, um, there, scientifically.
I thought that's not the idea of a person getting money, you know.
Yeah.
I, I hope short of them up in bird.
Yeah, you know, and, and.
I'm not sure anybody really did in that room to call them specifically. I think. It's just you have all these very strong opinions about something and it's one of these. Topics like, and there's really no way, somebody's gonna be unhappy here.
Somebody's gonna have to look at it closer.
But I, but I think to the point of our goal, we are an advisory. Commission, an advisory board to the select team. We don't. Make decision, you know, just. You know.
Gather information and make a.
Just plans. And I see our role is. You know, being a little bit like facilitating some community dialogue. I think it's okay to do that and then sort of taking it all in and. Tried very hard to not like. All my own opinion in the mix. Doesn't matter. It's really more about like, we're selecting all this. Sure, trying to think of the best way to move it forward and keeping an eye on our town. This is a tough one because the town plan allows for both. sides of this. And I'm just gonna add one, just one more thing was that, um, two, Two Rivers. Did not show up at the meeting. They declined to come and. I said, he, as I had said, are you coming? And he said, we've looked at everything and we said, we have no questions. We see no reason to be there.
That's interesting.
Well, you know.
From, from, from a town plan, from every aspect, this, this is a very personalized thing. This is not my backyard thing where I respect that. I respect that.
And I think.
But we need to learn how to move through that. It's not, it, it is our job to question it. But we need to learn, learn to go through this and do it right.
Two Rivers was also targeted by the same individuals in the beginning and they sent a letter out and I know I was CC'd on it. I think we were. And they were like. You know, it's starting to sound like a personal issue type of thing. So. Only work you lose. And only one other thing that I need to bring up is serious. I think Colin has already openly trained.
She barks, she gets a treat.
I bark, I treat.
All right, well, let's wrap it up. It's late, it's like, and if everybody, I still.
We have still recording.
I'm sure we are. Yeah. Oh, no, my God, it's appreciated.
Yes, excellent.
After last.
Watch that.
Last three delay.
Let's see. I don't even know what I'm doing here. End, right? There's sand, my glasses thrown my head, so.
I'm not, I don't have time to walk up and down the road.